Or activities or outdoor, um, outdoor improvements and see if we get some response then. Any questions about anything else that's on the report?
Uh, item three, your discussions with Cochran and stuff, I mean, did they give you any kind of timetable?
No, I, it was hard to kind of judge what all was going to be involved, especially with the, the northwest part of the watershed. So they're hoping to have something back. I think it's going to be about three or four weeks. So we talked to them a couple of weeks ago. We may hear something in, you know, by December.
I mean, do they claim any expertise in that type of business or is that, um, I mean, is that something they do and have done or?
They have done, yeah, they've done that in the past. Uh, they've, they'll look at where the, where the creeks go, what, what's feeding those creeks and working its way down to South Gabry. Um, if, I think if they felt they couldn't do it, they would let me know and then we'd move on to somebody else.
I mean, do you think it'd be worth our while to maybe reach out to somebody else? Um, I mean, can we research any engineers that may have that in their, uh, portfolio or something that kind of specializes in that? Just, you know, because of the broad range of this and the possible cost, I think we could be looking at, I mean, I'd.
Well, my first, first thought was let's get a price, see what that cost is, and then we would go out and, and see if there was somebody else that you, or if, or if anybody else was out there, maybe we do the RFQ at that point. Uh, but, you know, let's first see what it's going to cost and if the board's going to move forward on it. Uh, you know, I, I don't mind talking to a number of people, but it just takes, takes our time throughout the day to do that.
Right. I mean, I understand that. I just don't want to go one and done, uh, and not know we're getting the best bang for our bucks or getting somebody with a lot of expertise in that area. Cause it is a specialty, uh, thing.
Well, I, I think we have had good results from Cochran, so I, I, I trust what they do. And, you know, that's why I don't mind pursuing it with them. But yeah, if you feel uncomfortable just going with them, then we'll, we'll pursue others.
I mean, we've never used them for something like this though. We've always used them for water sewer projects.
Yeah, yeah, since I've been here.
I, I'd just like to know we're getting our best deal because this is a big deal.
Yeah, no, I was just to blurt out the topic. Uh, you were asking about other people. Uh, Steve, did, did you talk to anybody at Alliance about, I know you were going to talk to them about stormwater?
Yeah, as far as stormwater goes, that's not something.
They don't have anybody in there?
Any other questions? All right, well, we'll move forward. Thank you, Happy. Uh, Jeff, I don't guess Jeff's in, uh, is not here tonight? No, he is off on a, uh, something that's sort of planned before he started work here for fundraisers outside of Louisville, so he is out of town. So you've got numbers in front of you. Uh, we have updated numbers for Pecanopolis, which was about forty-five hundred people, thirty-five vendors that were there. Turned out to be a really good day. Veterans Week salute, about a hundred and sixty-five people, uh, to take the tours. Uh, it was a pretty neat tour. If you haven't had a chance to look at what they had, it's, uh, it'd be worth it in the future when it comes, it becomes available again. And then the rest of the numbers, I don't want to rehash everything that's on there. Okay, any questions? Takes us to Chief Bennett.
Good evening.
Evening Chief.
Uh, you have my report there. There was a question that brought up today about animals at large, um, which I assume is from the number that's on the report. Uh, those are actually anytime the county is dispatched to something. So the county runs all of our animal control in the city. So anytime a call comes out in the city, even if it's miscellaneous for the sheriff's department, if it's, if it's in the RGO code, it comes in as a city call. So we typically will get if there's an aggressive dog or something, we will respond to that being the closest entity, but it usually, if it's an animal, it'll lose, uh, it's usually the county that handles that. Uh, there are times that, that we will transport there and then give them the information and, and we'll check to see, you know, if they have city licenses or whatever and, and we'll, we'll cite those that don't. Uh, as far as the cats at large, I know there's a couple of people downtown that are feeding stray cats, which we've, we've discouraged in the past. Um, and, and continue to, to discourage, but, uh, there are a number of, of cats running around downtown that I've noticed. I don't know that there's as many dogs as we've had in the past, but, uh, but the cats are, are an issue. I know when the, uh, gym was open down there, the iron or gray, gray hawk or whatever, they, they had some program where they were collecting the cats and, and rehoming them and, and whatnot. But I don't believe that's in process anymore.
Thank you for addressing that.
Is there, is there anybody in particular that I need to contact about that?
No, sir, I'll take, I'll take care of it. I think that covered it. Thank you so much.
Okay. And then, yeah, like I said, a few years ago, the county passed that tax that, that allowed them to build the kennel and everything. So they took over all the animal control for the, for the county, including us.
That's great information. Thanks, Chief.
Anybody have any specific questions? I think everything's going, going fairly well. Uh, we're hoping to have Officer Underford, Underford back. We're hoping that he'll get released in December to come back to, to work. So, um, you know, it's just kind of in his, in the, the doctor's hands there, but we're hopeful. Uh, he, he was actually awarded a, a grant through a Running for Heroes, uh, program. It's a national program and, and they're coming down next week, next Tuesday to, to present that. And then Zachary's running the following Wednesday at St. Louis. So we're going to go up and be in the procession there and, and some of the festivities up there. So, so Officer Pete will be here for that and, and we'll be up there for that also.
Eric, I don't know. Uh, can we talk about this now as far as the upfitting of police vehicles or just add a couple of questions?
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, I, I know this is kind of detailed and stuff and looks like times two, so this is completely upfitting.
What, what we can use, we do, but like cages and the, the racks and things like that, that are, that are vehicle specific that are coming out like the Taurus and the, the explorers aren't. They're not compatible with other, other vehicles, but any siren box or siren speaker or light bar that we can use, we do. Uh, but all of those things have a, have a shelf life also, you know, so, um, yeah, we definitely try to reuse everything that we can. Radios, we, we typically will reuse as long as we can. Um, and then like I said, consoles and all of that are, are usually pretty vehicle specific, so.
Do we ask for the stuff that we're not able to transfer?
We, we surplus that and typically sell it to other agencies that are, that are needing that. Uh, the last few years, uh, the agency that had bought our cars off surplus have, have made an additional deal for whatever equipment we can sell with that. So, and typically we go off surplus prices for that. We contact state surplus and see what they're selling their stuff for and, and we'll, we'll surplus it at that price.
These costs are not included in the lease of the vehicle? This is an over and above expense that you blind eye to?
No, 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 that's, that's all, that, that will be all encompassing in the pop, uh, price of the lease.
Oh, it is? Okay.
Yes. So that, that's figured out. So the cost of the car plus the cost of the equipment and the upfitting is all, is all figured out. So the lease price that we pay will include everything that's in that.
That's all I got. Thanks.
Anything else?
All right, Chief.
Thank you.
Steve?
Evening, everyone.
Evening.
Uh, I had mentioned in the past about a problem with the CO2 tank at the water treatment plant. Uh, it's the refrigeration unit that, uh, allows the liquid to turn to a gas and, and feed through the treatment plant. Uh, that tank is, the, the blow-off valves are leaking on it at, at this point. We've got a company coming in this week. Uh, hopefully it can get here tomorrow. If not, it'll probably be Monday, um, to look at that unit. I don't know if it's going to need a total replacement. I don't know what it's going to need, but it's currently leaking at this point, so. Um, using about, we used about six months' worth of, uh, CO2 in about two months, so.
Does that hazardous to any of the employees?
No, it just gases off. It's no hazard to anyone out there, so. So I don't know, I don't know where we're going to end up with that, but that's, that's coming, so. And I don't have prices yet until they show up, so. Uh, down at the wastewater plant, the UV unit, uh, that, that was shut off and disconnected, uh, put into storage for the winter. Uh, that's only required to run until October thirty-first. So that system was shut down, cleaned, uh, put in storage for, until April first. We did have three main breaks. Uh, one on Chadwell, one on Third Street and one on, uh, somewhere else, Seventh Street. So lots of, lots of temperatures going up and down to, to the season, so. Um, up in the park area, uh, we cleaned out the park garages, organized, uh, removed debris, trash, anything that's unuseful, uh, was removed. Shops were organized and, um, and much more user friendly at this point. Soccer fields, we had to do those a couple of quick times there at the end of the season for Valley. Uh, we got those done. We got a, uh, got a nice thank you from Valley for, uh, going out of our way, getting those completed. It wasn't on the schedule. It was a schedule change on their part, so, um, they appreciated it. Streetside, we did a few days of patching. Uh, about thirty tons of asphalt was purchased, uh, put down potholes, streets, curbs, gutters, uh, anywhere it was deemed necessary. Did get the new road on Main Street by the railroad. Uh, Bowman's did a nice job on that. Uh, also did some touch-up work on Main Street, uh, patching. Lots of the equipment repairs. We, uh, we've had the backhoe repaired, two lawn mowers, two dump trucks are in the process. Numerous small items, so.
You said backhoe repaired, the new one?
Yes. Yeah, that one had a, uh, a blown air conditioner in line, but, um, not so much for the air conditioner at this point, uh, so much as it is defrost, so. Cleaned up the brush site. Uh, I don't know if anybody was down there. You couldn't get down the gravel road. It was out so far. Uh, we ended up having the backhoe and skid steer down there for three days. Uh, both equipments running for eight hours each day and finally got it in a little better shape, so.
Steve, do we have any word from Cochran on our engineering process for moving that panel and?
Yes, uh, they're waiting for Tuesday. They're going to come down. They're going to look at all the components inside the panel. We had Citizens Electric come down and we had the problems, but now I have to have Citizens Electric come in and kill the power to the plant, uh, so they can open the panels up safely. So once they get that information, then we know more.
So the repairs we made are holding up or?
Holding up.
Just holding up?
Yeah. I do have, I do have one high contact, uh, contactor on the high service pump number three. Uh, it's chattering very loud. We can run on high service pump two and keep number three on reserve. Um, in the event that we have to run it, it's there, but I'm, I'm, I'm being very reserved with it, so.
So have they given us any timeframe when they're gonna?
I don't think we'll know anymore until they see what's in the panel, so.
Should be pretty quick because they're looking at what specific equipment needs to be in the specs. So that's all we have to wait to safely get in and work on it.
Well, Steve, in essence, and you're describing we have a panel that's in the same state as the panel was the day before the incident. I mean, it's, it's, uh, it's unknown to us, right? It was unknown to us the day of the incident.
Correct. My staff doesn't touch the panel. They don't work around the panel. They don't go near the panel, so.
Is it flagged with anything? Like if you were to have somebody that wasn't aware of that situation that walked into the plant somehow?
No, it's already in a painted yellow area, so.
Okay.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Steve.
All right.
Chief Starker?
Good evening, everyone. Should have my report. Probably the biggest thing we got going on, the biggest scuttlebutt in town on social media is our big fires we've had recently. Had seventeen calls in fourteen days, uh, with a total of three structure fires. We usually average five or six structure fires in a year, so that's like a half a year's in just a couple of weeks' time on us. To squelch any scuttlebutt on Facebook, they are not related in any way, even though they're within a few blocks of each other. They were all, uh, causes determined to be the operational failures of some kind or another. So we do not have an arsonist running around or there's nothing, nothing we're keeping from anybody. It's just coincidence that that's the way it happened. On a happier note, I do have one of my fireman's sons interested in being a fireman. He's done the background checks, so we'll be putting him on shortly. He's a college student, so he'll be gone for school, but he'll be living in town yet, so we do have a guy come in. Do you have another guy that's supposed to show up the other day? He forgot it was deer season, so he didn't bring his application in yet. He should be bringing that into us within the next week or two, so we potentially have a couple more guys that we'll be adding. Everything else is pretty much status quo. Open to any kind of questions.
I forgot a lot of things in my life, but never deer season.
Yeah. Well, Bob, do, do we need to still get together and discuss?
Well, I was going to try to catch him after the meeting and stuff. We haven't got together, you know, the three of us, but we're looking for participation, maybe from you in some direction.
Yeah, I've, I've actually got a couple of my firefighters I've talked to that want to be on the committee too.
Sure.
So we got one of our younger guys and a guy that deals with unions and labor and stuff like that, so he got some background in it, so. And I'm, I was talking to Alderman Rainey the other night. I might, wouldn't even mind seeing a couple of, uh, civic people involved in it, a couple of citizens too, get some input from the citizens. But yeah, we, I'm ready, willing to start anytime. I can give you a couple of my schedule and we can work something out.
Sure. I know Happy and Paul is also, uh, asked to be on that committee and stuff, so we'll be glad to.
Yeah.
Just let me know when and where.
Probably the easiest thing to schedule is our Wednesday nights because we're out there every Wednesday night. The local pushing works out, it's not wrong to schedule and we'll, we'll definitely need to get going, get meeting.
Kenny, you mentioned we've had six months' worth of fires in a matter of a couple of weeks here, but, I mean, this was three total losses.
Yeah.
We don't have five or six total losses and.
There was some extenuating circumstances in the fires. The first one after I called the state fire marshal in because of the explosions, which I went to a higher authority than myself. It was more experienced investigating. Uh, there was a natural gas leak in the basement that was determined, so it caused it to burn quicker and heavier than what a normal fire would. Plus the construction style and that being a story and a half, there was a lot of what they call knee walls with hidden voids and things, so it was traveling behind walls that we had to tear out to get to that one. The, uh, one down off of Gabry was because of the age of the house and it had a rapid start on us because of a malfunction in the vehicle. It caused it to hit the outside of the house and took off. We got there pretty quick. I was actually only a minute from the firehouse. I had the first truck on scene within six or seven. It just was that much fire that we couldn't stop it. And the last one, mobile homes are always horrible about fires when they get started, especially in the seventies era. Most of those have two-by-two stud walls instead of two-by-four, so it doesn't take much to burn through those and burn them out. Uh, I was actually at work that night, but when I came home, I saw it and I was actually impressed with the job my guys are able to do to stop it where they stopped it. Cause there was still a portion of the trailer that was, would have been survivable if we would have had to do a rescue.
That's the key word, survivable.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
David? Last but not least.
Good evening. Uh, I just got my report there. Uh, we did have our, uh, Heritage Commission meeting this week. I typed up this report before that. So the COA that was on the agenda there was approved. Um, you got the numbers there on the Building Department, Department of Code Enforcement. I would add that as we continue the code process to transition, um, the NEC, the electric code we follow is on opposite years. So that'll be a 2020 update, uh, that will probably come to you, uh, at some point early next year, whereas the other codes are 2018. Um, the apartments on Portus were granted occupancy this week, so just wanted to give you that update. And then, uh, we do have a new house going up in Valley Spring, uh, now. Under rental housing, uh, for folks who go online to use that, that has been updated, so there's new information posted there on the city's website. Under P and Z, uh, you can see we did have our meeting on the ninth and there'll be two special use permits brought to you tonight for approval that the, uh, planning and zoning has approved recommendation. Board of Adjustment had a meeting, uh, last week also and approved a set, a front setback variance. That's about all I have unless you have any questions. All right, thank you.
Very good. Thank you all. Takes us down to our COVID discussion. Still need to keep that on there. I'm, I don't know.
Numbers are starting to go back up, so.
It did, yeah.
Yeah. Well, it's, let's keep it, we'll keep it on there. We don't have anything to report though.
So I think I seen somewhere there were nineteen new cases the day before yesterday.
Yeah, yeah. So.
In, in, in town?
Yeah, but there was like four or five zeros that we, they, days before.
Yeah, so our count is still at two daily, three, so we're not up to our point where we worry about masks, masks again, but we'll, we're getting into the holiday season. People are getting indoors. Okay. Keep looking after it, so. Any committee reports?
Park Board meeting on Monday.
Monday, the twenty-second?
Yep.
You're, you're meeting here now?
Yeah, we're going to meet here. Um, our newest member, um, would be best able to attend via Zoom, um, currently, so we're going to meet here so we can use the Zoom features. Um, and then that'll open up for the public to attend from home if they want and, uh, make it a little easier on, uh, the local TV station, so, so.
Okay. Uh, Building Committee met with Steve Bacon, went through some of the design features we're looking at. Most of the discussion was on the need for a large HVAC system to, to carry this room in the summertime when it heats up so much. Uh, that's probably where our biggest cost is going to come from, but we talked about arrangement of furniture, walls being removed, uh, access from our doorway in the back, so.
Windows.
Windows. We may look at replacing these windows. They're so nice. And that would be an add alternate and also would be a requirement to go through the historic, the historic, uh, committee to, to look at. So there's a number of hurdles that we'd have to go through on that, but, um, and we might even replace the carpet. I'm not sure.
I know.
New duct tape.
Yeah. That's right, grill it in.
Can we, uh, do something about the wasps and the lights too?
Well.
Ambiance, no.
If, if we, we take care of our, our roof, we might be able to, yeah.
Take care of the wasps.
So, uh, we should get something back here in a few weeks. We, we got the, uh, contract agreement with, uh, Mr. Bacon and the, uh, as our ident, as our, uh, agenda addendum. But we're figuring getting a set of plans for the committee to look at again probably, uh, maybe middle of December. Takes us to, uh, public comments. We have some public comments.
Good evening. I mean, Ron Clam, we met a couple, about a month ago. So, uh, primarily I had, I wanted to see if there's any questions in regards to a letter that I sent to Happy and copied the mayor and, and Buck and, and Bob Alderman, Joe Kirsten Dunham on some concerns I have with, again, the creek that goes by the house carries a lot of stormwater. There's a few trees, uh, near my detached garage that, uh, are washing out at, at the root. And they've, they've got the leans and I've got some concern about those potentially falling over. Actually, the, the trunk of the tree might be good to leave there to help hold the bank, but, um, there's a, they're pretty, pretty large. So anyway, I, I, just if there's any questions on that, uh, from those that had a copy, I sent some photos as well. I could certainly answer them. I mean, you can contact me anytime, but I thought I'd come down and visit. Um, so that's the primary reason. And then the earlier discussion, it sounds like that, uh, the stormwater that our neighborhood's concerned with, you're looking into getting a, a study done. That's very much appreciated. Um, we met with Alderman Dunham, uh, the other night and talked about, keep in mind, I am not an engineer, uh, especially a civil engineer, but talked about what appears to be maybe some short, short-term solutions to help the issue. So, um, any consideration to that would be appreciated as well. But back to my letter, any questions, comment? I, I, I see that Joker's, uh, ultimate Joker's isn't here, but. Okay. So again, uh, your attention to the stormwater is really appreciated. Um, if we could, we'll do our best to keep up to speed on that. And, uh, if I can help, feel free to contact me or, or whoever is in charge of it because I'll do what I can. So that's it for me.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else?
I think stormwater is the hot topic, right? So I was here a couple of months ago. My name's David Schwartz. I own the multi-tenant commercial building across from McDonald's. And again, I kind of did some research. So I was here last time, got a little bit more information I wanted to share. Wasn't exactly sure of the process I needed to go to to get for any guys again, but Happy informed me before the meeting that I needed to come during a work meeting. I guess, uh, maybe figure out if we want to do some work on this problem or what, but I just wanted to share with you guys that since the last time I found the, uh, the maintenance agreement that was set in place, um, found out that Portus Street was redone around two thousand thirteen. The stormwater inlets or outlets, I guess, that drain the street are what's dumping into this ditch causing the erosion. When the city did that, when they redid Portus Street, they rip raft the side of the ditch to help support the water. And that's where I believe the maintenance contract came into place. So what has happened now is the rip raft that was placed by the city when they redid Portus Street at the outlets of the, the storm sewer is what's cau, directly across from there is where the rip raft that the city placed is coming down, causing the hillside to the road. So before I just kind of, I didn't have a lot of the information I have now. I mean, I have some pictures as well. Um, and anyone's free obviously to go, to go see it, but you could see where they put the outlets in from the Portus Street to handle this, the, the water, the stormwater. And directly across from there is where we're having the issue. So I just wanted to be brought to you guys' attention that, to me, looking at it, and I think anyone would agree, that the reason I'm having the problem is because of the outlet of the stormwater system that was put in when they redid Portus Street. I did get some bids. I, I'll save them for the work meeting because I have some work coming through. Uh, but I just, I didn't want to blindside anyone. I didn't want to blindside Happy. I came in ahead of time. I just wanted to come up here and kind of give some comments, so you guys can maybe talk about it or we could prepare for the work meeting next time. So, does anybody have any questions or comments for me?
Just maybe one Dave. Where that, uh, water comes out there, I mean, uh, does that kind of come out there as a ninety-degree angle to the flow of the?
It does. There's two outlets and, and they, and again, if you go there and look at it, you'll be able to see exactly where the city put the rip raft on the opposite side to help support the bank, which was the right thing to do, but it just didn't, you know, eight years, nine years in the stormwater we've been having, it just didn't hold up. So now it needs a little bit of, of maintenance, so. But I will return at a work meeting so we can discuss maybe.
Yeah, we'll discuss it more in the work rather than.
Yeah.
Appreciate the comments and then we'll, we will deal with it and we'll line up a work.
December ninth.
December ninth, we're going to do the work.
Is that?
December ninth.
December ninth, okay.
Okay, thank you.
For a meeting. Okay, thank you.
How you doing?
Rick Figgy. I'm just kind of concerned about the, you guys are maybe possibly talking to an engineering firm. Has it ever been done before? I mean, we, uh, uh, of stormwater or anything, has, has anybody ever looked into, is there a report from the seventies, eighties that could be compared to or does anybody know of anything that's ever?
The only report that we know of that we've got on file is the, um, Cedar and, and Park area working towards, uh, uh, Center Street. That's the only one that I know of. I don't think there has been a report.
All the years, we'd never pursued any kind of an engineering report or anything from that.
Not to anybody's knowledge. Now that we've come across from digging in our files. Now that we've come across from digging in our files.
Okay. All right. That's basically all I was kind of concerned about, if there was ever been a report before. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments? No other public comments, we'll move forward to the consent agenda.
I'll second them.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Very good. Thank you all. So at six thirty, we will conduct our first public hearing. The mayor and the board will conduct a public hearing to consider requests from Jamison and Lindsay Walker for a special use permit to allow guest lodging at 170 Seraphin Street in an R2 general residential district.
Good evening again. Mr. and Mrs. Walker submitted an application on October twenty-second. Notice was sent to the applicant and the adjoining property owners on the twenty-sixth. Application sent to the police and fire departments on the twenty-sixth received back their recommendations on the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Meeting notice sent to the media on the third. Held P and Z on the ninth. They recommended approval by a vote, I believe, of six oh two. And then notice was published in the paper on October twenty-seventh of both the P and Z meeting and tonight's meeting. At P and Z, we did receive one neighbor comment. It was neither positive nor negative, just pointing out that they would like to see off-street parking, which is being provided, and their yard not used. So the applicant is aware of that and said he will address it.
So they were parking in the yard now?
There was already parking there. The neighbor just wanted to make sure that that was continued, and he would like to see that shored up. That is not, did not come up in the P and Z meeting.
Any questions? If there's no questions, we'll end the meeting, the hearing at six thirty-two. So at six thirty-two, we'll do another, we'll start opening up another public hearing. The mayor and the board will conduct a public hearing to consider requests from Marshall and Jeanette Brodkin for a special use permit to allow guest lodging at 409 LaCombe Street in an R1 single-family residential.
So seller, another guest lodging application, application received on the thirteenth. Notice of meeting mailed to the applicant and property owners on the twenty-sixth. Police and fire on the twenty-sixth received back those the twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth. Meeting notice sent to the media on the third. The hearing and the P and Z meeting were published in the paper on the twenty-seventh. P and Z met on the ninth, recommended approval, again, I believe, six oh two. And that is what you are receiving tonight, and Mr. Brodigan will, actually, both parties are now on the screen. But Mr. Brodigan is also on the screen behind you, if you have any questions for him.
But I do have some, a couple of general questions for David while he's at the podium, kind of regarding this. Just to clarify, do we keep a running list of the guest lodging properties?
Yes.
And then?
In the city limits.
With the, yeah, within the city limits. And then these are non-transferable special-use apartments? So if, right, if like, we grant it to this property owner and they decide to sell, they can't necessarily sell it as a, if the next person wants an area to do it, and there would be a need, do they have to reapply for the city?
We can certainly write that in, though it's not as it's being presented to you typically. There's, that can go one of two ways. Special use does travel sometimes with the property, sometimes with the owner.
I'm just curious, in general, not necessarily specifically either of these properties.
Any other questions? No other questions, we will close the public hearing, second public hearing at six thirty-four. Thank you, David. Takes us to old business. This is the second reading of bill number forty-four fifty-six. An ordinance approving a zoning change from an R1 single-family residential to a I2 general commercial district for a portion of 175 Cony Street, Coin Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Iguan.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster. Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-four fifty-six now becomes ordinance forty-three seventy-seven.
Thank you very much. Takes us to new business. Bill number forty-four fifty-eight, an ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to be held April fifth, 2022, and providing notice to the general public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading of bill number forty-four fifty-eight.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
The second reading of bill number forty-four fifty-eight, an ordinance calling for the general election of officers of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri to be held April fifth, 2022, providing notice to the public, the general public.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Iguan.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-four fifty-eight now becomes ordinance forty-three seventy-eight.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-four fifty-nine, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of agreement and scope of services with Simo Regional Planning Commission for an update to the St. Genevieve Comprehensive Plan.
I'd like to have just a brief discussion about that and stuff. You know, when this takes place and stuff, I mean, we're not bound by any of these things that they come up with. These are just merely a long-term plan, possibly.
You should, if you're going to adopt stuff, you should follow what it says. So if you're looking at future land use, you should follow what that future land use recommends. If you're gonna put in future roads, you really want to try to develop those new roads or extensions.
But I mean, we have a comprehensive plan now that hasn't been fully implicated, correct?
It's fully implemented. It's just.
Oh, it is?
It's referred to. You know, we look at it whenever we have something coming before planning zone, and we see if it follows, you know, what we feel is the intent of that, of the plan, but it is way out of date.
Right. But I mean, all of those items in there, we haven't put into place.
That's correct. No, well, I don't think any city does, but it gives you a roadmap.
It gives you a guide, anyway.
As you, it's just like us doing our park plan, you know, you want something to, you know, it's such your goal for your futures and what you're working toward.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Looking for a second reading.
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Very good. This will be the second reading of bill number forty-four fifty-nine, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing the mayor to enter into a letter of agreement and scope of services with Simo Regional Planning Commission for an update to the St. Genevieve Comprehensive Plan.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-four fifty-nine now becomes ordinance forty-three seventy-nine.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-four sixty, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Jamison and Lindsay Walker that will allow guest lodging at 170 Seraphin Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading of bill number forty-four sixty?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
The second reading of bill number forty-four sixty, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Jamison and Lindsay Walker that will allow guest lodging at 170 Seraphin Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Alderman Iguan.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-four sixty now becomes ordinance forty-three eighty.
Thank you. First reading of bill number forty-four sixty-one, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Marshall and Jeanette Brodigan that will allow guest lodging at 409 LaCombe Street.
Motion. Go ahead.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading of bill number forty-four sixty-one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number forty-four sixty-one, an ordinance approving a special use permit for Marshall and Jeanette Brodigan that will allow guest lodging at 409 LaCombe Street.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Alderman Iguan.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-four sixty-one now becomes ordinance forty-three fifty-nine.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-four sixty-two, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri amending the personnel manual as set forth below.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us to the first reading of bill number forty-four sixty-three. An ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Bacon Commercial Design for the architectural and engineering services for the remodel of the boardroom in an amount not to exceed fifty-four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for a second reading of bill number forty-four sixty-three.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second reading of bill number forty-four sixty-three, an ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve authorizing the city administrator to enter into an agreement with Bacon Commercial Design for the architectural and engineering services for the remodel of the boardroom in an amount not to exceed fifty-four hundred dollars.
Motion to approve. Second.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Smith.
Yes.
Alderman Donovan.
Yes.
Alderman Iguan.
Yes.
Alderman Rainey.
Yes.
Alderwoman Arberster.
Yes.
Five yes, zero no's, three absent. Bill number forty-four sixty-three now becomes ordinance forty-three eighty-two.
Very good. Thank you very much. Is there any other business? If there are any other communication, if there is no other business, I will...
Paul, just a quick comment and stuff. You could probably tell by the number of people that were here tonight about the stormwater. You know, that's why I kind of pushed the conversation a little bit about looking at a expertise firm, looking at the best view we can get. You know, there's, this affects a lot of people and stuff, and I think there's a growing concern about this, and I think that's something we need to take very seriously. So, I mean, it's a problem, and we need to address this appropriately.
I totally agree, and it probably should have been looked at twenty years ago. Nobody had, and so now's the time. It's ended up in our lap to do this. It's, I'm gonna tell you, it's gonna be quite expensive, and it's gonna be a challenge. So I don't know about you all, but I'm up for the challenge. So we're just, you know, it's gonna take a lot of work, so.
Happy, is this something, if we come up with this plan, and, you know, whether the survey is pretty expensive, or, and then we approve taking the next step and spending the money to do that, to get a plan, you know, then to implicate some of this? I mean, you know, I know we're probably, we're all guessing it's gonna cost a lot of money and stuff. I mean, is this something that could be covered by a bond issue or?
First of all, we're gonna have a work session on this, and it's not on the agenda, so we're gonna end it right now.
Good question.
It's a good question, but.
It's a reenteral for me, Paul. I gotta keep up my.
Yeah. So if there's no other comment or anything else, then I will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you. Need to brew all the agenda?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's all yours, Happy.
All right, so we're heading out on tour, folks. We're gonna do the fire department, welcome center, we'll go by the park house. And then see, if you want to, we'll walk through the unfinished place, probably, or you can wait until it's done. At this point, it looks like it's about another month away. We just got the cabinets and desktops, I'm sorry, countertops. Still got some floor needs to go in, some ceiling tiles need to be cleared. So we'll go to the fire department first. David and I will be driving. Do you want to ride with us, or do you want to drive yourself?
You're coming back here.
I'll make sure.
And we'll eventually, yeah, come back. No, we're just gonna drop you off.
I'll make sure everything's locked up right here.